Go ahead and call this meeting to order at 6:35 PM. Sunday, June 13th, regular school board meeting here at the high school and room. College First Stand, Public Allegiance. Public Allegiance. All right, I look for a motion to the agenda.
They're moved.
Um, as Brooke mentioned, we don't have a student presentation from the high school tonight, so we strike item number four. Are there any other changes or movements to the agenda? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And you've been answered.
Yeah, yep.
Looking for a motion to approve the minutes for them on the May 23rd meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, corrections, or discussion on those minutes?
Yes, I was present.
What?
He was.
I was present.
Oh, you were present? You weren't, were you listed as not present?
Correct.
Okay.
Do that, or a lot of people weren't there and I was.
Any other corrections or discussion of the? All right, all those in favor of approving with the correction to make John present, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, next is public comment, anyone here in person, public comment, our only, oh, public person?
Nurse. Brooke, thank you for setting the tone to the next.
Did you just identify yourself too?
Can you speak just a little bit louder, please? Thank you, I just can't hear a word you're saying, so.
So I have questions about the, one of the policies that we voted on tonight, district equity policy. Um, under implementation, number two, it's the plate value.
We have it, I hope we have it.
Um, my question is, when the district determines what's culturally relevant?
Under definitions, number two, you said?
No, under implementation, number two, where it's talking about, um, plate value will provide every student with equitable access to high quality and culturally relevant instruction.
I think that's something we work with the curriculum director to their term. That's something, when we talk about implementation and procedures, that's something the administrative comes up, administration comes up with, um, procedures as a related policy.
How is the district able to provide, um, for number two? A little bit further into that in curriculum. Um, it talks about being able to provide respect to each individual identity and culture without causing, how can the district do that without causing exclusion or singling out of students that he taught out of certain curriculum?
I would just caution you, this is a public comment, so.
Yep, I'm keeping it on my own.
We don't need to necessarily give you answers to your questions specifically. Um, you know, the policy meetings are open to the public too, and you had concerns about the development of causes, probably should have attended one of those meetings while they were being discussed, not necessarily during the public comment portion of the board meeting. But I'll give you a few more minutes, so just go ahead through your.
Well, that's my question, how would, like if I, as a parent, the three kids in the district choose to opt my children out of certain curriculum? That causes and has caused a great deal of distress to my child because they're singled out, they're excluded from the entire, how can the district prevent that from happening? But in the policy we're saying we're going to respect individual identities. Does that make sense, is my question?
What answer?
I mean, I think everyone's entitled to their own opinion and can opt out of, you know, opt out of certain, um, topics, but that doesn't mean we're not going to teach those to- topics.
No, I guess.
It says equitable not even.
Right.
I guess that's the point of distinction, so I think it is important that.
I think we're going back into a problem of just previously, but I'm very, very clear on where we're at right now. I'm only asking when the policy states, uh, each child will be respected in their identities under number two.
Right.
I'm not arguing curriculum, I get it, this is a public school, I'm just asking, how can we prevent the child from feeling excluded and singled out when we don't want them to participate in certain curriculum, like is that something I would talk with the specific principal or teacher or?
Yeah, absolutely, and I think we can do that in a respectful, this is a respectful way, and a child shouldn't feel singled out.
When we're looking at number five and it says identify and counter bias practices? Is that, or are we talking about specific race, gender, everything involved in being, having a biased practice? And is that?
Race, gender, socioeconomics, um, so, um, so when we talk about opportunity gaps, make, um, sure that students have equitable access to, to resources, um, that we're providing in the district.
Okay. That's all I got, questions about that, stick it up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone attending virtually who has a public comment, and so please unmute and identify yourselves? Okay, moving on from public comments. Correspondence, so nothing's been directed to my attention, anything you brought?
No.
Uh, central office report.
Hey, Tim, I think somebody, yeah.
Somebody that's trying to speak, but they're muted.
They just unmuted, but we still can't hear them.
All righty, I guess I'll just backtrack for a moment, the public comment, if there's somebody online who's having some, uh, technical difficulties and wishes to speak, I'll give you a moment to try to troubleshoot that.
Also public comment chat.
Yeah, you can type in your question or comment in the chat function as well. One, she can hear us.
I think she can because she was trying, she was answering, talking.
Send the chat to her.
Brooke?
Yeah.
All right, so I'm just going to keep moving forward, we are on item number seven, which was the central office report, it was included in our packets. Um, anyone have any questions for any of the central office team about contents of the, uh, the report? Discussion points?
Kelly, sure, go ahead, Chris Cole. Uh, what is going on with the softball field, additional softball field, what are we looking at there?
Yeah, we're rearranging athletics here at the high school middle school, so that we can accommodate middle school students up here, so we'll be rearranging, um, soccer fields, softball fields, uh, things like that.
How are we handling the soccer field, that practice soccer field that we have up, well, is that?
I don't know the final decision on that, but we're working with the athletic director and, um, she's working with her coaches on final placement.
We haven't finalized any decisions yet.
Uh, we're pretty close to finalizing, yes. But I don't know what the final, Kim's working on it. We've, we've got a new plan, we have to accommodate 200 kids that are coming up here.
Yeah.
It's not just about the high school and those athletics.
Do you have a particular field in mind, or concerned?
I was just concerned about if we, if we're going to lose a soccer field.
No, we're not going to lose a soccer field.
Where?
It just might be the prac, that practice field is getting moved elsewhere. And we're using that practice area for possibly a softball field.
Can you share those plans with the board when they become kind of finalized here over the next number of weeks?
Yep.
Anything else, Brooke? Anybody else who has questions with the administration?
I can have Kim come to the next meeting and talk about it.
Or just let you know what's going on, or we just put it in our central office report.
No, I mean, it's, it's nice to know with Rick, you know, I mean, moving things around, new kids coming up here, limited space.
Right.
We, we have space, there, there's adequate space, the only event we can't fit here is, uh, middle school baseball. And we have some ideas around that that we'll, uh, bring to the board up.
Yeah, I had mentioned, yeah, I talked about using these fields based down at the grade school and, you know, I stress the need to make necessary improvements down there to elevate the quality of some of those facilities, so.
Yep.
I'm an interested party, Rick's an interested party, it's happening this summer, so we need some information. Uh, anybody else, central office report?
I do, Tim.
Sure.
So, um, Casey, I didn't know, we don't have to answer this now, if, it would be nice to know how our senior class is shaping up for next year, kind of decisions they're making, and kind of what it's gonna, what it's gonna look like. Um, early college, maybe workplace learning, number of students that are taking advantage of that, the relationships we're building out, just kind of getting an idea of what that senior class is shaping up to.
So kind of like registration?
Yeah, like, are, are after, after, post-graduation? No, not post-graduation.
Here's seniors.
Next year's seniors, yeah, next year's seniors, kind of what is that class shaping up to look like?
We can move on that.
Yeah, number of AP classes we're offering, just kind of like what it's going to look like next year at Fairhaven, so.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I mean, we could put that on the August 8th agenda because, um, there's a lot of things in flux right now, we're still trying to hire teachers and without, with no applicants.
Yep.
We have some school choice kids that have decided not to school choice now, and so.
Okay.
There, I think there's a fair amount of fluctuation going on right now.
I'd just like to continue to talk about the opportunities that Fairhaven students have as they move into that senior year for choices, for like I said, early college, work-based learning, what they're, how they're spending their day, because people start to, I know they should be thinking about it earlier, but usually it hits it when you become a senior, so. Thank you.
Yep.
I also don't think, I think this is our first meeting actually since the, the tragic school shooting in Texas.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And, um, Brooke, I know you had mentioned, I think you're in the news, uh, comments that you sent out on Friday, you spoke in a couple of those articles about our agreements or relationships with the Sentinel Security, we're not using them any longer. Um, you touch on school safety in your part of the superintendent's report, so I guess wary of the sensitivities of, of certain things, is there anything that you need to inform us, or you want to stress upon this board about some of these schools that you choose?
Um.
Strategies in place, or developments, or?
Yeah, I mean, there's a couple of things I can talk about, um, one, I mean, obviously, I, I think our district's one of the models in the state on, on these, these issues, I think we've done a reasonably good job with the things that we have in place, certainly, um, there's always refinement and enhancement of, um, those pieces. Um, I would say, um, the behavioral threat assessment component is a really important component that we, um, utilize quite a bit in this district, um, and, sorry, I'm distracted by the banging on the wall.
I think that's.
Oh, a ball.
I think Ben went to.
Um, so, um, those, th- those are critically important, um, and I think we do a great job at having relationships with kids, and our kids feel comfortable coming to many of our staff members, um, when they have questions or concerns, and that's something that all of our schools have really done a great job at fostering. We also have a very good relationship with, um, local law enforcement, we have three different entities that we work with in this, in this district, but we do have a good relationship, um, that's relationship-based, it's not, it's not this, I got you, kind of, kind of, um, system. We, we really want to build relationships so that when, um, a student sees or hears something concerning, they're coming forward and they know the right people to tell, and it's been pretty successful for us.
I think the other thing that we added this year was we also, um, worked with training, uh, some of the staff from the Boys and Girls Club because of the after-school programming and the summer opportunities that they're providing for our staffs within the schools as well, so we wanted to ensure that they were aware and, um, following similar protocols for what we do, you know, so that that's the same during the school year and summer as it would be as if we're in school because they're all still our kids.
And, and we do the same thing with our bus company and with Abbey Group, so all of our contract service providers. But again, I mean, I think frequently any of us, any of the administrators at the table are called upon by other colleagues of the state around what we're doing here, because I do, I do think we're um, a model, and while we're on the topic of school safety, because this has come up quite a bit, so, um, the trees that are along Route Four, um, in the back of the high school, those were cut down by the agency of transportation, so it's nothing to do with the school district, um, however, our security expert who we have on retainer, um, does believe it does not pose a significant safety risk, in fact, it's probably better that they're cut down so you have clear lines of sight, you don't have people that are able to hide in the trees or, you know, the underbrush, so I just, I think that's important to have on record because that is something we have been dealing with here in the high school and have had calls from various state agencies about it because parents are going to that concern, so I just want to dispel that, where we're aware, we've contacted all of our safety experts and they don't see a problem with it, so.
Also in your email, you mentioned one of the companies that we're consulting with does like sub-motoring or tracking of social media platforms.
That's social, yeah, so Social Sentinel, and, and Chris and I can tag this, but Social Sentinel was a company that we contracted with for three years. Um, and really what they do is they monitor public social media posts for concerning words that may, um, or concerning phrases that may be connected to our school, um, and so what we saw over the last three years is really, we, we were not getting anything of significance, we were getting things that were tied to video games and, and there was, because most people are not posting publicly, they're doing it privately, and so we have another system, Go Guardian, I believe, that looks at our internal network and things that are sent through our internal servers and emails that have concerning phrases or, um, concerning content, and that, we get flagged there and are able to follow up with, um, students or staff or whomever on, on those concerns, but the public monitoring really wasn't doing much of anything.
So I didn't know if you, like, gave a roster of all of our kids.
No, that's not how that works.
Through their social media, see what you can.
No, so what, so what it work, is we give them key words.
It works to Twitter and Facebook, anything posted on Twitter publicly or Facebook publicly, it could monitor, and you put in keywords, Fairhaven High School.
Later.
Later, you know, but you put in keywords, but that's not where the communications happen, it's all on, you know, I don't even know the platforms, but there are platforms that are private to kids.
Sam's chat, or.
Private to the parent. You, there's no way to monitor it, and, um, we, we don't really, not what we want to be monitoring, um, as a school district, so we use a program, Walt kind of manages the program called, um, Go Guardian, which is on the Chromebooks. So, it's not like we're watching their phones, we have nothing to do with student phones, that's their own personal private phone, this only works on school devices, uh, mainly Chromebooks. Uh, I mean, Chris, we've gotten some alerts that are concerning this year, Chris's staff, all us on top of them, and, you know, they take care of, uh, everyone as they come in. Those are a lot more beneficial than Social Sentinel ever was to us. We get maybe a dozen a week.
First point, the, you know, counselors and, and, you know, 11:30 on a Saturday night, texting somebody to let them know on those kinds of things, so, that platform is really valuable, we definitely. There, further for see.
All right, and I guess, you know, safeties are number one priority, so I trust if you feel you need anything else from this board, that's where I catch you. You sort of.
Absolutely.
All right, is there any other discussion topics contained within the central office report? Thanks again for you guys putting that together.
Tim, you do have a comment online from the person that wanted to do public comment, but she couldn't get her account working.
I mean, this is something that we'll just follow up.
Okay.
All righty, uh, moving on to committees, uh, the finance committee met prior, again, I'm sorry that we were five minutes late, uh, turn it over to Glenn for an update and some action.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, we met earlier and I'm going to try to take things the way we had discussed them, um, which is a little different than what is on, um, the agenda there, but it's the way it was on the agenda for the finance committee meeting. So the first item of discussion was the fact that, as I think most of you are aware, after a lot of years Suzanne Ducharme, um, has decided to no longer be treasurer for the district, and Don Custer has been, um, elected to that position and has taken it, so, um, we need a motion to, um, have Tim sign on behalf of the board, uh, signature cards for our new treasurer, so that will allow both Don and Cheryl to sign, um, on behalf of the board.
Good.
For financials, uh, like checks and stuff, so.
So I will make the motion to have Tim sign the resolution for the signature cards on behalf of the board tonight.
Diane. Any question or discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Want to oppose?
Okay, so the second thing on our agenda was a discussion of the food service contract, and the food service contract goes out for bid, um, every five years, and then we're, are allowed to renew that, um, four times for, for one-year renewal. So, I would make a motion that we renew our contract for fiscal year '23, um, which will be our second renewal with the Abbey Group, um, and it looks like meal prices will stay the same as they, they had been, um, and those were provided in our packet, but just as a brief thing, um, breakfast $2.25, lunch $3.30, all-a-cart equivalent $3.30, after-school snack $0.95, summer breakfast $2.25, summer lunch $3.30, and there is a management fee per meal served of $0.16. So I would make a motion to approve this renewal for fiscal year '23.
So moved. Any discussion, questions on that, uh, renewal?
Yes, yeah, um, why, so it's been five years, or we just renew it?
We re.
True.
It hasn't been five years, we just renew it annually.
Okay.
So it went out to bid two years ago?
Yeah.
So this is our second renewal at that price.
But we don't have to renew it, you're saying? It's good for five years, do we have to renew it with them?
So it's good, it's a five-year, and you have to renew it, you have to act on renewing it each year, four times with the Abbey Group, so you acted when you went out to bid and you selected Abbey Group, that was the first year, and now you have four renewals of that initial contract, so this is the second of those four renewal.
So do we have to stay with them, or is it?
If you don't, we have to go out to bid and you wouldn't have a food service company.
Yeah, I don't want to go out to bid or anything, I was just curious of how.
Guarded the fiscal year.
But there's an out every year if you wanted to explore. That's what I was wondering.
We would need to.
Advance notice.
You would need to know that we, that there was some, that was the desire or a positive.
Thing went down the drain and they were doing a lousy job and we wanted to get out, we could get out for next year.
Yes, you can, each, that, here you have a renewal, I just would remind you that it's a long involved process, so that would be something that we'd start.
Yeah.
Well, I don't. Easily six months in advance, yeah, after, you have to start it like six months in advance, because not only do you have to do the process, but the agency of education has to approve every single document you go out to bid with, and, so.
Okay.
It's just, takes a while to do.
All right, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question, so basically these, every renewal year, the prices were already set, or you said the, the same as they were last year?
These are the prices, so when we were awarded that contract, they agreed to keep those prices the same over the life of the contract.
Okay. And I, I just got to ask, I mean, through, like, next year, I mean, how do we monitor the quality of the food, because we've all been to the grocery store over the last couple of months? Uh, and it just seems funny that they can renew it for the same price.
Well, it's, that's what they, that's how they did it.
I, I understand.
And they, you know, they can come to us for some adjustment or based on certain circumstances, and they may, because of the issues that they're having, I'm, you know, in June '23, nobody anticipated.
Right.
The issue that we're having right now, so it's possible they can, within certain parameters, ask for some adjustment for that for a period of time, not for the remaining life of the contract, so that's why we renew it based on the terms of that contract, and if they, if there are other circumstances they wish for us to consider, they'll, they'll come to us with that, um, and, uh, did we, else you said that I was going to respond to, I missed it, what else did you ask me?
Who monitors the quality?
Oh, um, we have, there's an advisory committee that meets, uh, per our policy or our procedure, our wellness procedure, uh, that meets with, um, the food service company contractor representatives from each school, students, staff, parents, if we can get them, and, um, discussion and feedback with the, the service company, I mean, there's monitoring in terms of, uh, there's like procedural monter, monitoring that I have to do, but it's not quality monitoring, that would occur as part of that feedback with the advisory group.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions on the, uh, motion to renew the Abbey contract for one year? All right, hearing nothing further, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank Glenn, I'll speak with you.
Okay, so then the next thing, um, that we discussed was to approve the paid meal prices for the, um, '23, '24 school year.
'22, '23.
Okay, yes, '22, '23, and those are also, uh, looking like they will be the same as they were this year. And so those, um, I guess first we'll have a, I'll make a motion to approve the prices, um, for the students, and they are, um, students. For the students and they are students breakfast grades K through eight of a dollar seventy. Student breakfast high school, dollar ninety-five. Student lunch, three dollars and a milk sixty cents.
And separate those out, are you?
Well, it's written here, but I think I'm just going to put it all together, also. The adult breakfast price of three dollars and the adult lunch price of five dollars.
That's a motion, does anyone second that?
Second.
Further question or discussion on the crisis, meal prices for students and adults for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, any questions, discussion?
We provide the meal, that's free for them, right?
Correct, if they want a second meal.
Do we provide breakfast too or just lunch?
We provide breakfast.
Okay.
Provision covers one breakfast and one lunch per student.
If they get a milk, if they have bring their lunch and they get a milk, is that provided by the school?
No, it doesn't cover the milk, so in order to get a milk, they actually have to take an entire meal or pay for their milk. No, not covered, milk is part of the meal.
Yep. Whether you drink it or not.
No, I have it, I just wanted to, because I know.
You can't get, you can't.
Some kids get a milk with their home lunch, so they're being charged that.
Yes, correct.
Right, you can't get just.
You're getting a lunch and just dumping.
Dumping a lunch into garbage. Fortunately.
Drink the milk.
Yeah, that's a.
All about survival.
Federal rule, they want the kids to take eat the whole lunch, so that's why they did that.
Yep. All right, any other questions on this one? All right, all those in favor of approving kid. Adult meal prices for twenty-two, twenty-three school year, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Okay, so we did just touch on the finance committee meeting that legislature and the governor did approve. Universal meals. Piece that was in the legislature, so the state will pick up. The cost of the universal program for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. There is a. Net revenue right now in the food service account of a hundred and twenty thousand, but as we know, things can change drastically due to pricing. The other thing that we did discuss. It really doesn't require any action. Time was that there is a. Bizbit multi-line renewal. And for fiscal year twenty-three, that will be three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Which is a four point six cent increase from this year. And that includes our workman's comp premiums and all kinds of other. Premiums like if there's a. Computer liability case or anything like that, so it's a, it's a bunch of not, it's non like healthcare type.
Correct.
Premiums and non fire or structural kind of premium.
All your liability coverage, property and liability and workers comp.
Okay, and then the last thing, we had a. Just kind of a, a little bit of a brainstorming session in looking at. Potentially starting, trying to start the budget process a little earlier, just so that we can improve communications with voters. Earlier, get them thinking about stuff earlier. There'll be more on that to come, there is going to be a special finance meeting on July twenty-sixth. Which does not correspond with any board meeting, just to kind of start the thinking of what are there going to be the priorities? And how do we get our message out a little better to the voters, that hopefully we don't have to put on the budget points. And then lastly. We've got some bills to take. So I would make a motion to approve the warrants in the amount of. One million nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars and five cents.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing the, hearing none, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion. To pay the capital reserve amount of twelve thousand, fifty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion to pay the food service bills in the amount of sixty-two thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and six cents.
Second.
Questions on food service? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
I'd like to make a motion to approve. Grants in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-five cents.
Second.
Questions or discussion on grants? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
I'll make a motion to approve bills under the high school student activity account of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents.
Second.
Questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And finally, I'll make a motion to approve bills under the elementary student activity accounts of sixteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-one cents.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Want to pose? Anything else want?
That's it at this moment.
Question, when you were talking about this bit and, you know, of the different liabilities it covers. Now, does that cover, when you mentioned computer things, does that cover like ransomware, that type of thing?
It's a cybersecurity, okay.
There's an extensive application that the district completes for cyber liability and they do at this time provide a cyber liability coverage.
It's really cheap and I think that our workman's comp and everything else is on that. Okay. I have a view.
Cheryl, we didn't miss anything, all the items that needed action we got.
That's everything, thank you.
All right, thanks Glenn. Again, everyone's invited to that special finance meeting, so we'll set that. All right, policy. Tanya, is that Tony or we?
Is Tanya on?
I'm here.
So it looks like we're adopting three policies tonight, Tanya?
Yes, um, I don't know if you want to do them all together, we'd like to make a motion to adopt C twenty-nine, district equity. And.
You can just go all together.
Okay. And we'd like to make a motion to adopt C fourteen, which is section five oh four and ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act grievance. For students and staff. And we'd like to adopt D twenty-two, selection of library materials.
Second.
Is there any further questions or discussion on either of these policies, C twenty-nine, C fourteen, or D twenty-two? By board members.
Tim, I got some questions on the E twenty-nine equity thing, there was some concerns I had with that, some were answered. You answered the public comment about parish records as far as their students are involved, I think there's a way for them to go about. Getting satisfaction for. Being singled out by, yeah, which is good, I think. But to me, it was pretty broad and I get lost in the weeds of it.
Any question or those are just general, general thoughts?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I'm with you, Rick, a lot of this language makes me uneasy, maybe to your points as well, I don't think right now is the time to. When we're adopting this policy to to have those conversations. I would just ask you to make sure that when these notices for these meetings go out and are warned that. You know, it's in policy committee or board at large, advertised in the public setting.
Yeah.
That people can be involved in discussions and developments as it's happening. Just are these policies typically looked at once a year?
Yes, yeah.
Just, I guess, be involved as the discussions are happening. Go to our websites, reach out to Brooke, what's on the agenda for the policy committee, you know, is there maybe a timeline or a schedule of policies when they come up typically?
Not typically, I mean, we can certainly work to do that, right, Tanya?
Yep.
You know, this month we're looking at to renew these policies, next month.
Yep, yeah, right, yeah, because sometimes we, sometimes the committee doesn't like take action, it's not like we adopt them. We just look through them to see if they need to be revised or if they don't, you know, meet current legal requirements or what have you.
So we don't re-adopt policies every year, we just adopt them and then we may look at them, if nothing's changed, we just move on.
Correct.
Tim, I just had a question about that, I wonder. I know we have an equity diversion, diversity committee.
We don't this year, we did last year.
Excuse me, sorry, but that might be the place where like an individual might want to attend those type of meetings, because that's really more the conversation. To your point that you were asking, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name, but you know, is, it's not, to me, it wouldn't really be so much of a policy. Because once it gets to policy, it's kind of way up here, I think your questions are kind of down here as far as on the ground, what does that mean for me as a parent? So I don't know, I might just suggest that maybe there is even one annual meeting where people come together and talk about what that really means. Because these, I mean, I've read all this boilerplate stuff many times and it's really super confusing and I've been in the business for a long time, so.
Well, it's just easy to to just skim through this material, adopt, yep, yay, but then when an issue comes.
Right.
We're in the news and we're reading all these fine lines and then it becomes uncomfortable for all of us.
Yeah, you can do some really good stuff with like scenarios and things so that people can, you know.
Then at the high school, as this started these potluck dinners where parents come in and have discussions on these issues to learn more about them. So those are some things that are happening in in our schools. But that's just one example. Not the stuff like that, but he happens to be there.
I think a lot of them, a lot of this is driven by the state anyways. Safety advisor.
It is, it is, yeah.
And they put it out through the framework of education to the schools.
Yes, and there's going to be new standards along this line of the legislature passed, Casey can certainly talk to you more about that, but there are required standards that both do have to be moving forward.
And I know, Rico, are these all in the the handbook we get at the beginning of the year?
Not all the policies, not necessarily all the policies, they're all on the website.
Right.
Because the handbook would be like three hundred pages long if we put all the policies there.
I probably email myself.
Right, right, so, but they're definitely all on the website and if there's like, we, in the handbook, we put more of like, these are the attendance procedures as it relates to the policies. This is what you need to know as a parent, you know, procedurally in terms of attendance or in terms of discipline, you know, is another one that we put in there, so.
I mean, in in future years, it might be nice if, you know, there was something in there about, you know, if you have questions on our policies, you know, here here is the link to.
Yep.
So it gives everybody a chance beginning of the year to. You know, browse our policies.
Yep.
Thanks. All right, any other questions on any of these three policies? All right, hearing nothing further, all those in favor of adopting policies C two-nine, C fourteen, and D twenty-two, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Item number ten, contract list and resignations, there was a late breaker that came in, so I think the current list has a.
Seven three.
Two. Resignation, a retirement.
Yeah. I know.
Do you need it?
I do, I have it. I make a motion to approve the resignation of Chris Thomas for Haven grade school social studies teacher.
Okay.
We good tempted to hear that? Sorry.
Quick, just talk.
No, sorry.
That's okay. I will redo my motion. I make a motion to accept the resignation of Chris Thomas for Haven grade school social studies teacher.
Second. Second.
Any questions on that resignation? If not, all those in favor of accepting resignation, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Julie?
I make a motion to accept the retirement of Thomas Smith, Fairhaven Union High School science teacher.
Second.
Any questions on the retirement of Thomas Smith? Hearing nothing, all the favor, something, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the new hire?
Yep, I make a motion to accept a contract for Scott Dorf, long-term social studies sub at two hundred forty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents per day.
Second.
Long term, is that like through Friday?
No, it's through, it's for seventy-nine days.
I was going to say, it does say seventy-nine days, nineteen thousand dollars.
For the next school year, yeah.
Uh.
Yeah, for Julie.
So he's just subbing for somebody, so.
All right, any other questions on the contract? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No, we just want to. Contracts in general.
All right, so item number eleven is board meeting on June twenty-seventh. Weeks from today is a normally scheduled school board meeting, I I think there are some conflicts or maybe it might not be necessary, Brooke?
Well, yeah, for for one thing, it's scheduled at Benson Village School and so if we were to hold it, we'd reschedule that because. We we have a lot of people on vacation that week, I would say most of the administrative team is also on vacation that week. Certainly, if it is needed, I will come in for the for the board meeting if if we need to have one, but I will be other administrators if they do not have to attend. So I don't have anything particularly for the data agenda, I think the major thing is going to be contracts. Hopefully, but typically you do make an authorization for the board chair to sign those contracts over the summer anyway in the in the interim. So I don't know if you feel it's necessary to have that meeting or not, totally, totally up to you.
We need to make a. Move that from our calendar or?
I I would, yeah.
So I make a motion to remove the Monday, June twenty-seventh, school board meeting.
Second.
Anyone disagree or have reservations, we'll discuss that further? So all those in favor of canceling the June twenty seventh regular meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so our next meeting thereafter would be the August eighth.
Correct, and so that would also, we would also be canceling the committee meetings as well. Certainly, we can have special meetings in July or what have you if if they're needed.
Do you foresee need for any special meeting at some point in July, given all the undertakings here at the high school, middle school, or anything else?
No, not necess, no, no, it just may be like August eighth, we may want to have a special building and grounds meeting or something to update. No, not necess, no, no, um, it just may be like August 8th, we may want to have a special building and grounds meeting or something to update you on the progress of the middle school, but we, we could do that within the context of the normal meeting schedule. Um, I, I don't foresee anything, hopefully, God would.
All righty, moving on to number 12, Other Business. Just to tag along point number 11, because there is no meeting on the 27th, we, we have a motion to authorize the chair to sign any new contracts that might arise over the summertime. So, uh, we're passing up a motion.
Motion to authorize the board chair in conjunction with the superintendent to approve educator contracts on behalf of the school board over the summer, and if necessary, determine employment grants and higher salary placements based on sixteen point six and sixteen point seven of the SVEA master agreement.
Second.
Question, turns about signing authority? All right, hearing nothing, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone else have any other business? All right, if not, I have two other quick pieces. Uh, number one, Chris Cole and/or Brooke, question was brought to me about the contents of the village school. And are we eating stuff there? Are we taking things there? Uh, are there any discussions with town representatives about what, what's going to be left in the school?
Yeah, we went with the town manager probably a month or so ago and we talked about specifics between the door controls and phone system and desks and chairs. We've gone through that list and, you know, there, we're probably going to be taking, um, a fair amount of stuff out of there. But I think there'll be, there'll definitely be desks, things like that, that'll be left there. Because we're moving, we've got new furniture coming here for the middle school, so.
So most of the furniture and fixtures, lockers, it's going to remain there?
Lockers are staying there. They're fixed assets of the building. It's, they're not coming over here. But I, I would assume a lot of the chairs and tables and stuff will, will be there.
Okay.
I mean, once we get ready to transfer the property, I mean, we'll do a final lockup of that with, with the towns and let them know exactly what's coming, what's going. We're still waiting to hear back from, from the town on some issues.
Once we get a closing kind of timeframe, then we're going to start working on the details of water, electricity, transferring all of that stuff that's going to have to happen.
We're not going to just be able to flip a switch, so.
All right, and then, uh, I'll, I'll be sending an email out tomorrow to the executive committee about, uh, the continuation of the next meeting for the superintendent's evaluation. I'll, I'll type this up, but certainly the two dates that I have in mind would be potentially next Monday, the 20th, or Monday, the 27th, in place of the regular school board meeting. So, um, I will send out a email to those on that committee tomorrow to, uh, gauge availability for the next meeting, okay? And anyone else, other business? Agenda building, I guess, we're just going to pass and get a list to go.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think we're talking about field plans, um, next year, you know, senior class, what the demographic that are kind of shaping up as. Um, we're going to have strategic plan, we'll probably be able to talk about the budget development process. So it'll, it'll be a probably fairly lengthy meeting, middle school.
I, I would say just, you know, August 8th is kind of late in the game to be opening the school up in a couple of weeks. So I ask that you guys just keep the board
Oh, yeah.
in the loop on progress, on setbacks, on developments. I just don't want to come to an August 8th meeting and have a surprise or, or whoops, or by the way, whether it's field configurations, construction updates. It's all in the loop, please.
Yep, we can, we can do that.
Right?
Absolutely.
Um, so executive session, student matter, I think.
I, I would, I would say legal matters.
Legal matters.
I make a motion to go into executive session, legal matters with who, Brooke?
Um, I'm fine with central office administration. Okay, with central office and administration.
Second.
All those in favor of going into executive session, legal matter, please say aye.
Aye.